I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order at 7 o'clock. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, moving along, we will turn to approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Cindy, do I have a second?
Second.
Paul, I got a second. Do we have any additions, deletions, comments, concerns, anything? Hearing none? All in favor? That is unanimous, so the agenda has been approved. Public input and announcements.
I think none.
Alright. I didn't have any in my email as well, and Andrea did not let me know of any, so we will move along. Approval of minutes from September 6th, 2023. Can I get a motion?
Sure.
Motion from Len? Can I get a second?
Get that.
From Nick? Do we have any changes?
Just one.
Okay.
It's just the spelling of my name.
Yeah, we can fix that.
Cindy instead of Cindy.
So with the correction to the spelling of Cindy's name, can I get a... All in favor? It would be unanimous. The minutes have been approved. We'll move along to the Mill River Union Guidance Update.
And Kalen was going to come and present that and share a little bit today. Unfortunately, Kalen went homesick.
Okay.
It's that time of year where everybody is working incredibly hard and worn out and exhausted, and illnesses are going around now that we're all back together. Jody's been working very closely in guidance while we've had some gaps, so Jody's going to speak to that for us tonight.
Okay, perfect.
I'm just getting closer to the mic for William. Alright, so, we...I have been up there a bit because we had to shake up the first week of school. One of our two school counselors at Mill River left suddenly, and we did have an open position that we posted last May that we never had any applicants for as well. So we were down from three to one, so...
Well, I...we had some applicants. The committee did interview.
Yes, true, true.
And the committee was not pleased with the applicants we had.
Yes, yes. True, sorry. So, Brandy Benick, just want to speak to her flexibility. Is one of our three elementary school counselors, and I spoke to Brandy and said, "Is there any way you can come help us up at Mill River a little bit?" And also speak to just the flexibility of the elementary principals who agreed to let one of their three counselors go. And so Brandy came up and started working three days a week up here while Kalen and I filled in the other two days. And then Brandy did fall in love with the work up there and applied and was selected. So now we have Cheryl Harrington and Brandy Benick both working together. And I just want to again, like, recognize that mid-year shift in flexibility and dedication. So she's getting up to speed incredibly quickly up there, but Kalen and I are still just up there supporting because she really had to start the year running. They have already held a senior meeting and advisory on September 12th to hand out Common App information, teacher letter of rec information, and the senior checklist to students and start those discussions. One of our commitments is to meet with every senior two to three times in the fall and really make sure that they have as much support as they need for their future planning. And so we've already begun that. And those are 15 to 30-minute initial meetings where we say, "What do you want to do next year? And what can we help you with in that planning?" So that's been everything from Common App to SAT signups to try to get students ride-alongs with careers, to talking about tech schools, lineman schools, all kinds of things. So it requires a lot of fun planning and organizational work. So we'll meet with them two more times. Information about senior meetings for parents went home via School Messenger on September 10th. So last year, the Life After High School series only had about 15 participants, and we always want to use data to figure out what we can do better. And so what they're trying this year is having two different sessions during parent-teacher conferences. So one at nighttime and one during the school day, thinking that maybe if parents are here to meet with teachers anyway, that might be a more...a place where we can just get more parents involved. And if not, we'll just keep trying, and that just might not be a service that we need to do. I mean, a lot of that senior year, we're actually just calling or emailing parents after we meet with the students and saying, "Hey, we talked about this. Is there anything else we can help with?" And add drop is done for the year, so our school counselors will now start going into advisories. They'll be going into junior and senior advisories to help students create resumes. And they go into all of the high school advisories to do credit accounting with students because our goal is that students really know what they need, and they can think very carefully, even in the ninth grade. Like, I met with a ninth grader in a college appointment this week that he said, "Well, I know these sciences are needed for MIT, so can we map out the next four years because I need to make sure I can get there?" Right? So that's the kind of knowledge we want to empower all of our students to know. If I want to go to GE, these are the math courses I want, so that they have what they need. And we're working always on connecting with our kids over at Stafford Tech so that they get that same level of service. Cheryl and Brandy are going to head over there and meet with all of our Stafford seniors next week. And we spoke to you guys a little bit last year about writing that Stronger Connections grant. So that was a state grant to cover how we can better serve students' social-emotional needs. And one of those pieces is sixth-grade activities to transition into seventh grade. Another piece was three years of a school-based counselor from Rutland Mental Health. We were able to fill that position, so we do have a Rutland Mental Health clinician here at Mill River. Any questions about any of that?
And I might have missed it, but we took Mill River High School, borrowed a guidance counselor from the elementary school.
We did.
Okay. So what happens at the elementary school?
We...yes, great question. So right now, now we've got two and two, and two open positions. So I have not posted the elementary one. I will do it tomorrow. I wanted to make sure Brandy had all of her contract signed before I, you know, because I never want to overlap. And we still have the high school one open, so we will keep these two openings and hope we find somebody. At the same time, our two elementary counselors, that's Paula and Wendy, both agreed to shift their schedules. So Paula's going to Tinmouth one day a week to take care of Tinmouth, and Wendy's going to Shrewsbury one day a week, and they're leaving their village elementaries. So, I mean, the good news is that everyone's been amazing about just being flexible and making it work. The bad news is we still need two more counselors. So we are all hustling to meet all those needs.
But I want to throw one thing in real quick. Saying we need two more counselors, we actually have an additional this year through that Rutland Mental Health.
Yes.
So, really, we're down one counselor from our staffing last year. Yes, we do have two open positions, but we're down one person from what we had last year. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
So we still have that other person. But we wrote that grant.
Yeah.
Because we needed more than what we even had.
Is the Rutland Mental Health person here five days a week?
Five days a week, full-time. There is some limitations on what they're allowed to do.
Yeah.
Right? Because they can't do any of this college planning, transcript planning.
Right, right.
They have to see kids who are signed up for R&amp;H, but it's still a great...
And if you remember, last year, we started off the year talking about feedback that we had gotten around the guidance department and how we needed to do a better job of preparing our students for life after high school. Part of the shift last year was to designate one of our three folks here at the high...at the middle high as specific to thinking about students in crisis, mental health, you know, more of the social-emotional counseling, and preserving two counselors to focus more on the academic counseling. So we wondered if we split those responsibilities, that that might protect the academic counseling and make sure it happened better. I think we saw that it did last year, and I think this year, we're seeing that we're even making more progress. You know, a lot of the things Jody's discussing with you, you go back five or six years, those things weren't happening at this point in time in the year, no way.
We're definitely making growth. There's definitely still great need.
Yep. So having that Rutland Mental Health counselor actually lines up pretty well with how we tried to divide those responsibilities last year. So, good. I think Kalen actually said they had an interview with a candidate, so we may actually be bringing a candidate to fill the high school spot. That means, you know, if we...if that does work out, we'd be looking for one more of that elementary person.
Do you know somebody? Have them call me.
Stafford, something I want to mention, you know, another piece of feedback that we've gotten over the years and we've talked about at the board level is, "How are we serving our Stafford students? Are they really our students and we're serving the same way? Or do we just write them off because they're out of our building for a lot of the time?" A lot of the feedback was that sometimes we think of those students last, so we make decisions, and then we realize the implications for them. I think we've worked hard to keep them in mind, maybe not first, but very close to first when we're making those decisions. We are on a common schedule now with most high schools. So Stafford reached out and talked, had some conversations with principals, saying, "Hey, it would be great if all the sending schools sent kids at the same time." And we are one of...one of the schools that had, you know, did the work we needed to do to fix our schedule so that we're sending students to Stafford at the same time that most students are getting there. So they're getting the most they can out of their day here, and they're getting the most they can out of their day at Stafford, which hasn't always been the case. For those students, sometimes there was sitting around and waiting because they got there at the wrong time, you know, for when classes started, things like that. So I'm...I hope you're also hearing that our guidance counselors are heading out there and they're serving those students too with these same after-high-school services.
They are working incredibly hard.
Yeah, oh yeah.
And it's very difficult to do a planning meeting at college and then do a suicidal assessment, and then go do a transcript review. And, you know, it's a really dynamic job here.
Yeah, and we have people working real hard.
Thank you. Alright, so moving along, we are now to the hybrid elementary meeting proposal.
BJ!
Hey Doug.
Hey.
Donnie.
Sorry, Will, you might have forgot BJ was going to talk a little too.
Okay. So we had...
There you go, Doug.
Brian reached out to me and said that you guys were interested in figuring out how to do the hybrid setup at the elementary schools. I took a look, there are like several levels that we can look at for some of this stuff. And it depends on what you're trying to get out of that. Very simple, I remember Len Doucette being on the phone. Attending some meetings from South Carolina.
South Carolina.
So we can get as simple as that, which I don't think was the best experience.
Yeah, and I think the challenge with that is...
Yeah.
We could support Len or maybe one other person, but we can't support the public.
The next level is, we do that same type of thing where you support a board member, like Liz could jump on just a Chromebook or a computer and interact. It's still not public, though. So I put together a quick...what I think we would need to do a quality job of the hybrid setup in the elementary schools. First and foremost, the hardest thing to get is good audio. And with a big group, it's really hard to get good audio. You can see we lucked out here that we have almost a permanent setup of microphones. The elementary schools, we do not have the option for a permanent setup. They do make something called an Owl Meeting Speaker, and when I looked at their specs, they suggest two of them. What it is, is basically a speaker, microphone, and camera all-in-one, and it'll do a lot of what Will's doing here, manually doing, automatically. So it'll say, "There's voice coming from this side of the room." It'll turn your camera to that side of the room, and it'll be able to follow who's speaking. Automated, but it'll be able to follow who's speaking. So that combined with a device, each...there is some work that I need to do in each of the schools to make sure that there's at least a TV in the auditorium, and if some upgraded Wi-Fi that's in the works already, that'll be happening. The other thing that is an added cost is that this will require setup and breakdown. It's not something that Brian should be doing, and it's not something I'd probably ask a school board member to be doing, because there will be connecting with the projector. They will be setting up these two mics. They will be making sure they're working. There's a little bit of extra setup with that. So the proposal I put together, that if you're interested, is...would require another person being here at those board meetings to...for setup and breakdown, and paying them accordingly. I think I estimated about $80 a meeting. The Owl camera, it suggested two of them. Those are not cheap. They are coming up to be around $1,000 each, so that's another $2,000 for a front costs, a computer. And each of the buildings should be able to handle a projection system of some sort in the gym, whether it be a TV that they roll in or something. So I think that's kind of covered. That's what I came up with. Any questions?
Just to clarify, it's one system that would move from school to school to school?
Yes. It would be one system that would be moved to school, school. So we would pack it up, set it up, break it down.
And, you know, if you look at these cameras here that Will's got set up, it's not hugely dissimilar from those in that they can rotate around. You know, they've got the camera, they've got the microphone. It's just not, as BJ said, not William moving them around, but they detect the sound and they move themselves. So we would set two of those up in the room, and then our computer hooked up to a screen like here.
I did ask my two techs, and they weren't interested in being setup people, so we'd have to find that person.
Finding somebody who's willing to run that. Yep.
And I'm not a tech person, but I've been in multiple meetings with those Owls and other districts, and it hasn't always been smooth. That's my nice way of saying it.
Yes, it's...it's not a human being manually choosing where everything is going with a setup that is...
Can't replace William that easily.
Considerably more expensive than I'm even recommending.
Well, I think that sort of answers the question right there.
Well, I mean, we would be doing this because we knocked it down, so we're only doing one elementary school visit each now.
This would be four meetings.
So this would be for four meetings for the entire year.
I think we can make it work without the system.
And to me, that's just...
That's my opinion.
Quite a bit of money, and could be a ton of hassle.
I think the person alone, this...trying to get the person to do setup and breakdown, equipment is equipment. We can buy equipment.
Yeah.
And then there's just...
You know, and what I'm hearing, and some other folks might chime in, but so far, what I'm hearing is a lukewarm thought of moving this direction. I do want to...I do want to mention that, say we set aside $5,000 for this, if we think a couple of meetings and the cost of the equipment, asking BJ, "Hey, do you have $5,000 left in your tech budget that's not already earmarked for something?" The answer's probably no. So that's another thing to think about. You know, if the board says, "Wow, this is hugely important, we need to do this," we will figure things out. But if the board is not feeling that strongly, I do want you to think about the budgetary work too. Maybe it's something that we put in the budget and think about for the future too. Or maybe you send BJ back to the drawing board and say, "This is great, but we'd actually like something a little nicer." Matt?
My thought process on this whole thing is, if this was a system we were going to use for all of our meetings, our committee meetings, our board meetings, if BJ was saying, "Oh, we can use them for presentations in the school," and it was a multi-use system...
That's a good point.
I would say, "Yeah, it's a great idea. Let's put it in the budget, let's get this rolling, and let's go with it." But for us to sit here and say, "Let's buy this system so we can use it four times a year."
But I also am looking at, like, you know, we're doing it for online attendance, right? We have two people who are not on the board attending, and sometimes that's not even the case. So we'd be doing...
And we greatly appreciate...
Yes, for sure.
Pat and Wendy attending.
But it's...it seems like a big hassle for the possibility of not even needing it.
Like I said, there are levels to this. I mean, there's no reason why you can't set up...have the chair have a computer right next to them that has this setup on there, and they navigate.
So that would be a almost no-cost option. It would just be a very low-quality production. Yeah, no, good point, BJ.
You want to say any other questions?
No, I'll just say, because I was the one that kind of pushed this. And I agree with what board members are saying. I'll just have to figure it out.
We can put you on the phone, it's okay.
We'll dial you up from South Carolina.
To have you join, and I can put you on my laptop and just spin you around like this.
We...and that's...we just would not call that a hybrid meeting.
Right, right.
That would be the...yeah.
BJ, and I appreciate the work that you've done. I mean, I...
Well, and it never hurts to explore our options and see what we can do, and then we're making an informed decision.
Yep. BJ, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Brian, is there anything else you need to be...
No, no, you're good. Thank you.
Have a good night. So we're going to move along to Board Education/Strategic Planning.
And that is really the placeholder we put for our community engagement work, because the last time we checked in, we talked about, we brought our goals up, we looked at our goals, and our newsletter, I think, was the most concrete, relevant, timely one to work on. So that really pushed us, "Hey, let's bring community engagement back. Let's schedule a meeting." And that group was working at 6:00 tonight to try and hash out some of that work. So do folks want to kind of chime in? What was accomplished this evening so far? Share it with the full board.
So we spent quite a bit of time talking about what would be in the newsletter, what a newsletter would look like, what distribution channels we'd put it out to, what that would look like, whether it would go paperless or out in the paper, whether it would be mass mailed, and...anyone else want to add?
Our timeline, we're thinking about doing it quarterly instead of just doing one.
Mm-hmm.
When we would put those out, which I think we decided December, January, June, July, is it September, October? I think.
And then there was talk of scheduling some follow-up meetings, which, you know, we could do during committee reports, or we could do now. I don't see a reason why we couldn't do it either.
I can pull up. I think we decided we are going to do our next meeting on the 18th.
At 6:30.
At 6:30.
Okay.
Right before the board meeting. And we...I mean, I don't know what the rest of the board had in mind. We just decided or talked about, as the committee, we would take this project on so it's not lingering out there for other board members to do.
Fair enough. And I think that, you know, that's good timing. Personnel goes opposite that, so 6:30, October 4th, but then the next meeting, we'll do community engagement.
Yeah, I think we're going to do the third Wednesday of each month.
And then if you've got something ready, you bring it right to the full board, you get approval, you're done.
Yep.
So there's...I like that there's not too long of a lag there of having a finished product to getting it out.
All set?
Yeah.
Unless somebody else has more discussion.
Has questions or...
Okay. You know, if no one else has any other questions or comments, we will move along to wood chip contract.
Okay, that was in your materials, and Frohling Energy, we've been using since we've had our wood chip boiler. The interesting thing about that is, at the time when we got the wood chip boiler installed and we started trying to figure out who was going to be our vendor for the wood chips, there's really nobody out there, because you need to find somebody who's actually going to bring the wood chips here. So they have to be within a certain radius to actually make it worth doing. There are not a lot of local options, and Frohling is one of the few places that we could actually get to engage with us at Akeem, New Hampshire. So that's where we originally entered into this contract and really tried to do our due diligence to figure out who's the best vendor, are we getting the best price. This is a renewal of our contract that we've had for several years, and you'll see the price is $165 per ton. That is up $10 from last year. So last year was $155.
That's not bad.
So, you know, thinking about the way everything is going, we expected a little more. So $165 is not a terrible increase.
No, that's not bad.
So I would ask the board for a motion to authorize me to sign this contract.
I'll make that motion.
I'll stick. I'll stick with that.
I'm sorry, I kind of gave discussion already. Any questions on any of that?
One.
Yeah, Doug.
How long is the...if you're making a contract, how long is that going to go for?
This is a one-year contract, September through August of next year. And just so you know, I'll give you a little bit of an update. We are...we are well on our way having our heat ready for the cold weather. So that's still been a little bit of a work in progress. If you remember in April, we had that flood in our boiler room. So we are in pretty good shape and continuing to make progress, and parts are coming in and work is being done, so we should be in absolute good shape for that. That's all I've got.
All in favor? Unanimous?
Excellent, thank you, everybody.
You're welcome. Committee membership.
That was where we talked last meeting around thinking about our community engagement committee specifically. We attached the board committees again, just so folks could have that close and be thinking about that. There was some talk at our last meeting that we might want to rethink our committee membership. We revised our bylaws last year to clearly identify the process for members being added or removed from committees. And what we had determined at the time was that committees were to be set at our reorganization meeting in March, and then if any changes were to be made, that it would have to come to the full board for those changes to be made, if that makes sense. So we were talking about maybe adding a member to community engagement. So that's where we left off and wanted a little time to come back and think about that.
Does the community engagement committee want...still feel they need another member added, or you think you're going to be okay going forward until reorg in March?
I think the question was make and quorum.
Yeah, well...
Because you had a good group of people today.
Yeah, I'm looking, they've got...they have five members, so I mean, they can have two absent and still make quorum, so...
Well, we really only have four.
Yeah, because you've got Sam Green, Cindy, Nick, Paul...
Liz.
Liz. So, I mean, if you're missing two members, you still have quorum, so that's up to you guys.
We're always missing one.
Yep.
So, I mean, we...the last...
That means only one of us can ever miss a meeting.
Right.
Yeah. So if the four of you here feel like that's reasonable and you can be in some good communication with each other, just so that, you know, "Hey, if somebody's got to miss, who's missing?"
I think right now, it looks like Liz... I think right now, looks like Liz has a comment.
Well, I was just going to say, or if somebody has to miss, and we can have a good schedule also.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think right now, I think we're in a good position. Obviously, if somebody wants to swing by and visit, we would welcome them.
For sure.
Right now, between now and March, I think we are okay.
We're fine, yeah.
Well, if it becomes an issue, we can always revisit it again, so...
Very true.
So if you want to keep it the way it is, we'll just keep it the way it is for now.
Okay.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you, absolutely, for doing that. Committee reports, we are going to move on to Len's personnel committee.
We've got one that we slipped in for you. We have a bus driver who has been driving as a sub for us and has been driving the van for us. And we have a good need for a full-time route bus driver, so we are offering the contract to him.
I would make that a motion.
I'll second that.
George worked for us, gosh, I remember him, I think from my Shrewsbury days. I remember chatting with him when he was driving at that point in time. It's been a little while since he's been here with us, but as I said, he's been driving sub for us and van for us, actually, since the start of the year, so the last couple of weeks. Any questions? Okay.
All those in favor? Thank you. We did not have a meeting tonight. Our next meeting is scheduled for October 4th at 6:30.
Before we move from personnel, can I ask a question relative to our new science teacher?
Yes.
How is that doing?
The visa application is completed and out, and was out maybe, I don't know, a week ago, a week and a half ago or so. They tell us that the expedited processing on that is about two weeks. So we got that in about when we were hoping to get that in. They are now doing a little bit of paperwork for, I believe, the consulate out in the Philippines. On their end, so the visa process is on our end, the United States giving permission for somebody to come and work. On their end, they want to make sure that, best as I can tell, somebody is not entering into something that's fraudulent. They just need to do their due diligence. You know, they're asking for things like, you know, do you have a business license? Can you get a letter from your Chamber of Commerce? You know, things like that to make sure we're legitimate. So I think a lighter process than trying to get the visa sorted through, and probably a process that doesn't take very long.
So right now, it doesn't look like there'll be any gap in having a teacher?
I would really hesitate to say that's accurate. You know, you never know with things like this, you know, you talk to the IRS, and they say they're going to send you something in 10 business days, and, you know, sometimes it doesn't come in 10 business days. So I think Kalen is doing a really good job. I mean, the job of a principal these days with staffing shortages, where, you know, regionally, we have schools hiring 30 people, 20 people, you know? We hired maybe seven, maybe? The work of a principal with these staffing shortages is really challenging, because our principals are having to figure out, they're the ones right there filling the gaps, you know? They're the ones getting creative, they're the ones talking with their staff. Our staff are absolutely pitching in, but it really lands on our principals first, you know?
And things didn't quite work as planned.
Yeah, yeah. We had a couple of backup plans, and thank goodness, we had a couple of backup plans, yeah. And Kalen has been working, you know, part of the reason she's probably exhausted and probably vulnerable to getting sick, she's been working really hard to make sure that we not only have one option, but we have a couple of options. So we'll be ready to do what needs to be done when the time comes.
And she's teaching two of those classes herself.
There you go.
We, well, and we are very lucky that we have administrators who have no problem diving into the trenches and hanging out with kids.
Let me clarify for the students.
On the one hand, it is fun, yeah. But you don't necessarily find that everywhere. We have people who are committed and willing to do the work that needs to be done, so...
Appreciate the...
We're hopeful, we're hopeful, Nick, but I, you know, is it, could it happen that we don't have that science teacher till November? Maybe, could be.
We're moving along the way we want to be.
We're hopeful for our number, yeah.
Appreciate it.
No, good question, good question.
Thank you. Is anybody here to give an update on policy? I know that Andrew's not here, Josh isn't here.
I think no meeting, right?
Our meeting got bumped.
Until tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Okay, perfect.
Tomorrow.
Meeting tomorrow?
5:30, right?
So September 21st at 5:30. Okay. Buildings and grounds, we have not had a meeting since the last board meeting, so no update.
And that was on purpose.
Yes.
It was scheduled for October for a reason.
October 3rd at 5:00.
It's busy season.
Yeah, we sort of wanted to give a chance for maybe some issues to come up. Hopefully not at all, but... So the next meeting will be Tuesday, October 3rd at 5:00. Community engagement.
Community engagement, we met today. We gave a brief update a little earlier today. We will be meeting again on October 18th at 6:30.
Thank you. Negotiations.
And you're still waiting on me for a tentative date. I had an informal conversation a little bit with some union folks. Typically, in the contract, the deadline to initiate is October 1st, so we're getting pretty close to that deadline, so we need to settle on a date. We just haven't quite settled on a date yet to get started, so...
We will have a date, hopefully by the next board meeting, if not, shortly thereafter.
We should by the next board meeting. Well, we will have officially initiated the process of setting a date.
Perfect.
If that makes sense, yeah.
Works for me. Finance.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, super. So we have the following pay orders and payroll. For pay warrant, no, hold on, what am I looking at? For payroll, we have regular payroll in the amount of $595,826.38. For pay orders from the general fund, we have a pay order in the amount of $390,586.71. Also from the general fund, we have a pay order in the amount of $17,836.95. From our older school program, we have a pay order in the amount of $1,301.45. And from our lunch program, we have a pay order in the amount of $9,723.8. For a grand total of $419,448.19. We don't have any pay orders from our student activities accounts this evening, and I do make the motion that we accept and approve these pay orders Admin's payroll has presented. I need a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Nick. Any discussion?
No.
Ain't none. All those in favor, if you would raise your hand and/or say aye. Thank you, everybody. And the next meeting of the finance committee is Wednesday, September 27th at 4:00 PM, and that was moved from the following Thursday, which is the 5th, and that's because that is when Mill River's parent teacher conferences are being held.
Thank you. Transact, other legal business, I will need to be able to sign tonight.
Yep, absolutely.
Someone like to make that motion?
I will make a motion that Matt can act as the chair and sign the appropriate documents at the end of the meeting.
All right, a second. A second. All in favor? Thank you, unanimous.
Matt?
Yes?
I just want to add something under other legal business.
Sure.
The VFBA regional meeting is tomorrow night, and I will be attending.
Thank you.
I'll also take a quick notable and say this morning, I was at the regional...
Stafford.
Yeah, Stafford Board, I can't think of the official term for it. Stafford's off to a fantastic start, lots of energized students and staff and et cetera. Mill River's sending about three dozen students, a spread across all of the different genres, whether it's auto-tech, or culinary, or cosmetology, or engineering, or et cetera. It was quite the exciting little roundabout this morning, so...
Awesome, thank you. Any other legal business?
Agenda building. So we've got, and I put the schedule in that we had tentatively discussed, and I put it on paper, Liz had requested, that was in the packet. We are scheduled for October 4th for sports update from Kim, and then our class size update per G-14, our policy. So that's a great, I think, lead-in to budget season, so I like the timing of that being there. Those are the only two things I have on our schedule, is, do folks have a need for something else on that meeting? No? If something pops up, you know, we'll be conferring about the agenda, you know, end of this week, early next week. So if things pop up, let us know.
Absolutely.
Shrewsbury, just to give folks a little bit of a heads up, tentatively, Shrewsbury, October 18th. Kristen's ready to go for that, so I think if we, we should probably plan on that unless anybody sees a reason not to. I know that's a bit out, but we like to give those folks enough lead time to prep and have things ready.
Travis, Shrewsbury for Fall Foliage, works for me.
Okay, there you go, Doug?
If you're lucky, you won't have snow up there by then.
Not, let's hope not. Sometimes we have snow in October.
It's that high up, so it's past my head. It's warm.
Oh, yeah, it happens sometimes, yep. Okay.
Now, we do have an executive session tonight.
We do have a need for, and I'll get that language really quickly, I would ask that the board, I would ask that the board enter executive session to discuss... I would say evaluation of a public employee. Appropriate.
Can I get that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Second, all in favor?
Okay, Liz, we'll get you another link really quickly here. We're going to mute the room.
We're not going to take any action, wait?
Yeah, no action planned, but we will come back.
Do you have to vote to go into executive session?
William can go. We're going to go somewhere else.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're going to go somewhere else.
So I will now make the motion that we enter into executive session, right?
Yep, yep, yep.
So I'll make the motion, you can second it.
I'll second it.
All in favor? There we go.